Good evening. Thank you for being here on for the regular board meeting for Laredo College. It's Wednesday, November 19, 2025, and it's approximately 5:30, 4:00 PM. I call this meeting to order. Role call?
Esteban Rangel.
Present.
Cindy Leando, present. Tita Vela. Jackie Ramos. Absent. Erica Garcia.
Present.
Mercurio Martinez.
Present.
Adriana Alexander.
Present.
Lizzie Newsom.
Absent.
Karina Elizondo.
Absent.
We have a forum.
Thank you. Can we please rise, Ms. Benavides? Can you please give us a prayer? And Judge, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to gather and discuss the important matters before us. We ask for your guidance, your wisdom, and unity as we work together. May your peace and grace be with us throughout this meeting.
Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Ms. Martine, ah, Ms. Benavides. We're going to continue with public testimony. I've seen that there is a couple of people that are here for public testimony. Ms. Leando?
Individuals who wish to participate during the portion of the meeting designated for public comment shall sign up in person at least 15 minutes before the meeting begins and shall indicate the agenda item or topic on which they wish to address the board. An individual's comments to the board shall not exceed two minutes per meeting. Just a reminder to the board members that we are not to respond during public testimony, and you are free to make comments when the item is called. Our first speaker is Maria Jose Loera.
Just for the record, I do want to go ahead and mention, I did take a glance at the people that are speaking. They're all speaking on items 9C. Due to our length of our agenda, we have a lot of items we need to cover. We're going to go ahead and give everybody two minutes to be able to speak, because there is, I believe, nine people that are signed up for the same item. So I'm going to go ahead and have Ms. Leando keep time. So Ms., who's the first one?
It's Maria Jose Loera.
Please, go ahead, ma'am. You have two minutes. Ms. Leando, please tell her when she's ready.
Hello, my name is Maria Jose Loera, and I am a student in Laredo College. I am here to express my opposition of building a border wall on our campus. The money for this wall could be better used for more important things, like the improving of healthcare for the people who need to travel on weeks for treatment. The Rio Grande and the El Paso del, El Paso del Indian nature trail are great for fun and learning experiences, but they would be greatly harmed by the building of this wall. This construction could damage our natural surroundings, wildlife, and the Rio Grande, which is our main water source. As a student, I want a campus that matches our values and lets us enjoy nature, not one with unnecessary walls. Please say no to this wall and support projects that truly help the people of Laredo. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Loera. Our next speaker is Mr. Edgar, Edgar Villasenor.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, guys, for giving me the time to speak. So I'll just be brief. We all know border wall plans are coming, and we know that there, that there's a decision that's going to have to be made. And we all support border security. However, we just really wanted to state that, like, we need to have vision. There's ways, and we're in 2025, where we have high technology. We are, Border Patrol's amazing, CBP's amazing. You know, we have the lowest historic crossings. And I just wanted to say this piece of, thank you, guys, for allowing me, but instead of putting that, like, a bigger fence than the one that you guys already have, I would encourage you, guys, to think of a way to collaborate with these agencies, but without putting that wall and strategically making it more secure. And I'm saying this because that, the El Paso del Indian Trail, I've had the opportunity to go to it. It's beautiful, man. Give that to the kids, give that to the college students here. You know, like, some people didn't even know about it, like, the new guys, I know it's been locked, but, you know, if we look at the reports, there's historically low crossings right now. So the thing that that proves is that there is a way to have good security without having this wall and losing land and investment that I'm sure LC has made along riverfront property. So, yeah, I just wanted to make that brief, and thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Villasenor. The next speaker, Tom Vaughn. For the record, I'd like to recognize Ms. Lizzie Newsom as present.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tom Vaughn, and I'm here to talk on the same subject of the potential border wall and express my displeasure with the whole idea. As a lot of you know, you know, I came to Laredo, to the college, 45 years ago. And over the years, I cannot tell you how many student research papers, how many master's theses, how many research publications came from data that was gathered on the banks of the river on college property, which will, if this wall is built, become totally unavailable to anyone, and especially students. I know that the Environmental Science Center is being greatly modified and improved. But over the years, part of visiting the Environmental Science Center was also visiting the Rio Grande on the college property. So I'm here to lament the, you know, the possibility of all of these opportunities being taken away. And I know, I know that you, you know, you're in a, in a tough position here, but I would suggest that you, you work with the city of Laredo and any of the other entities that are, are working to get some alternative to a 30-foot steel bollard wall that, I tell you, once it's there, it will be there forever. And I suggest that, and hope you are able to work around to get a better, a better solution. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Vaughn. Our next speaker, Alvesa Garcia.
Hello, everyone. Good afternoon. My name is Alvesa Garcia. I am currently a student enrolled in Laredo College. Just like the people before me, I'm here to express my first, wanting to persuade you into the opposition of this wall. As somebody who grew up in Laredo and specifically in the South border area, I believe building this wall is at a disadvantage rather than an advantage. Um, for starters, people in the South struggle a lot with the water. It's always an issue, it either smells like Clorox, it's either just not functioning. I believe that the money invested for the wall could be invested for our critical infrastructure for this water. There's so many other aspects that you can put this money to. For example, um, just how they mentioned the kayaking, that's an experience I didn't even know about, that I would love to experience one day. I have a one-year-old son, I would love to take him and, as somebody, like I mentioned, who was born in Laredo, I have to travel to see these, or to experience these type of stuff. So I believe that having this here in my hometown is, is, and I guess, in a way, like, a great opportunity. And like how the person before mentioned, um, you building this wall is, is going, I guess, in a way, to get in the way of my studies. I'm currently just enrolled for the bachelor's program, and I'm going to have to build a project where I have to talk about, like, my, my city. And I think that just building this wall is, in a way, a negative rather than a positive. And how was mentioned before, BP and Ranau, I'm currently in the HSI program here at Laredo College. BP, CBP, Marshals, I, they're doing a great job. Crime is going to happen with or without this wall. If you build this wall, it's not going to stop the illegal immigrants from coming. It's not going to stop the drug import. It's not going to stop, because just how we are advancing with our technology and our minds, and just advancing period, they advance as well. And I'm not advocating for them, but just how we advance, they advance. So this is not going to stop the crime. But thank you for your time. I really hope I enlighten you guys. Thank you. Good afternoon.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Our next speaker, Gael Jacobo.
Hi, my name is Gael Jacobo, and I'm currently a student here at Laredo College. So addressing the concern about the, the border wall that's being built here in our city, um, I feel like it's going to affect people that like kayaking, because people, like, they always want to explore and see stuff, like, through the water. Like, like kayaking, it's like a therapeutic thing, like, for everybody, like, to, to de-stress yourself, like, to not to be depressed or, or be thinking about negative things. Overall, um, this border wall, this could affect our city, and it could affect, like, also our border city. Because under Trump's administration, like, it's, like, it's unacceptable. Like, like, why would you want to build a border wall, apparently just to secure, like, from bad people, cartels, like, to, from coming here to the, to the US, coming from Mexico? And like, it's not going to make sense, like, just building a border wall, like, you just want to do, like, what you say. And so, and speaking also about immigration, like, this could also affect many people that want better opportunities. Also, I could put, like, an example, like, of Jorge Ramos from, who used to work on Univision. Um, because of him, like, I don't, I also, I don't want to get censored, because, just because I want to protect the immigration community and especially our Hispanics, because nobody wants a border wall around our border city, because this could affect everybody. And because of Jorge Ramos, about all his concern to his, to the immigration community, like, this could affect us. And it could also affect me, because if I keep talking about trying to secure, like, not to have a border wall, this could affect us, and this could affect me, like, as for my dream career as a mass communication major. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobo. Next, we have Daniel Nicholson. Sure?
Sure.
And next up, Tricia Cortez.
Presentations here. And if I might, Mr. Chairman, I, I wanted to ask you, I know you all have very strict rules about not being able to present visuals, and you're, you adhere strictly to those rules. And at the last minute, you changed the rule on the three minutes, even though it doesn't say that. So we're here to present really valuable information. And if I might be able to reclaim that extra minute for this, at the very least, with this presentation. Appreciate it. Thank you so much. I'll just wait till everybody has their presentation. Whenever you're ready, um, sure, with the time.
Go ahead.
Started?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, and the Dr. Ramirez and staff. My name's Tricia Cortez with the Rio Grande International Study Center, and we are here to update you and inform you about very fast-moving developments by the federal government as it relates to the border wall for our community. I, I wanted to stress, you know, the city council has had four meetings already, and they have put together a framework for the strategy that they're going to utilize in terms of hiring legal counsel and experts. And at the Monday council meeting, which was the fourth one in just the last three weeks on this issue, they talked about putting together a coalition of local governments. And we're here to ask and hope that you, as a college and, and a steward of these lands and the river, and as a local government of this community, as we think about in the next 50, 100 years, that you all could join the city in that effort, and Zapata County that will also be joining them as well, since you're such an important stakeholder, a landowner. I wanted to reemphasize that this issue, it's not about Democrats versus Republicans. It's not about left or right. This is about our future. It's about land, a massive land grab, and it's about water. And it's about protecting the most not important natural asset that we have here in Laredo, which is the Rio Grande, our only source of drinking water. And more than that, it's also about protecting hundreds of millions of dollars in public and private investments along that riverfront that exists right now, and that would be hampered and hindered in the future based on the plans, the official plans that the feds are proposing. This is on their website, and they are showing a proposed alignment that includes all of Laredo, all of Webb County, and almost all of Zapata, too, the Presa, and that includes Laredo College. And what those plans are, it's called a smart wall. So you, you all need to know, that doesn't mean a virtual technology wall. Their smart wall, according to their definition, is a physical wall. It's the river buoys, it's everything. Their plans for us here in the Laredo sector, which is Webb and Zapata, it's not just the 30-foot steel wall. They also want to take out through eminent domain 150 to 250-foot wide security enforcement zone. That's the length of a, of a five-lane highway. And they also want to install, like in Eagle Pass, very large, the size of a human, if not bigger, river buoys that are separated by these razor-sharp saw discs. And there have been fatalities in Eagle Pass as a result. Very quickly to bring you all up to speed, so that you're updated and informed, on October 10th, DHS issued the first 10 contracts for six of the nine sectors along the border. They did not include the Laredo sector. Five days later, they issued a sweeping waiver of federal procurement laws for the entire southern border, which is unprecedented.
15 seconds, Ms. Cortez.
Alrighty, and then today, on the 19th, they issued a waiver of 30 federal laws that we no longer have access to. Uh, you'll see photos. The wall is not needed. Laredo ranks officially as the safest city in Texas. You're going to see this apprehension data, CBP website through October 31st of this year. We are at historic lows, so we ask that you please join the city of Laredo and others in their efforts in this coalition. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Cortez.
And next, we have Martin Castro.
Good evening. I'll wait till you all get a copy of the presentation.
Yes, sir.
And like my colleague, Ms. Cortez, I'd also kindly request if I could make up an extra minute for my presentation. Some of the information that Ms. Cortez already spoke about, I won't go through that, so.
That's fine, sir. Just make sure to keep it in three minutes, please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Oh, three minutes, is that correct, Mr. President?
Yes, just make sure you stick to the three minutes, please.
Does everyone have a copy of the presentation?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay, time starts?
Go ahead.
All right, good evening. My name is Martin Castro. I am the Watershed Science Director at the Rio Grande International Study Center, for the record. The presentation I prepared for you today will showcase to this board the impacts of, the actual impacts of proposed border wall infrastructure right here at the college. If you wouldn't mind flipping to the first slide. Some context here, my colleague Tricia already talked about the October 10th announcement by DHS allocating $4.5 billion in new contracts for various projects and sectors throughout the United States. Some background on the source data, if you flip to the next page. The data and maps that I'm about to show you come straight from the appraisal district, as well as the spatial data that's been sourced from Homeland Security's smart wall website. Next slide, please. You'll see a screenshot of the smart wall map for your reference. My colleague Tricia already talked about the smart wall definition, so I'll skip over that. She also talked a little bit about the proposed infrastructure and the scope and locations. I'm going to talk a little bit about that, just very quickly, just for Webb County. DHS is planning approximately 104.6 miles of new border wall in Webb County, um, and approximately 95 miles of floating buoy barriers as well. You'll see pictures of, of both of these in just a few moments. Next slide, please. How these maps were developed. I want to make something very clear, a disclaimer to the board. We have not altered any of the geometry or content from the original data sets that you're about to see, and the WebCAD data as well. We only applied a few visual enhancements to improve clarity, including showing the barriers as orange dots, which you'll see on some aerial maps. We also applied 150-foot buffer to the proposed security enforcement zone for the actual alignment, something that was not shown in the Homeland Security maps, but we know them to be, uh, will be the case. The next slide, you'll see an outline of the property for Laredo College. On the following slide, you'll see an overview, an aerial image of the college layered with the proposed alignment for the border wall. The yellow alignment in the middle is the actual path that the wall will take through the college. The red crosshatch buffer is the security enforcement zone that my colleague mentioned, that is 150 feet on each side. On the far left and the middle of the channel of the river, you'll notice the orange dots. Those are the buoys that will be installed as well. This is all straight from Homeland Security, uh, their webpage, so none of this has been modified at all. Next slide. Let's talk about an area of the college that I think we all know very well. This is the west, the more, more northwestern part of the college, behind some of the dormitories near the US Army Reserve Post Base, excuse me. If you see there, the alignment would basically be right up to the edge of the college campus, at least where the existing border fence, as we know it. The next slide, please. You'll see some of the renderings of what the wall would look like itself, uh, as we know it to be based on Homeland Security's, um, proposed alignment. Next slide shows another, um, another sort of visual there. You'll see the buoys on the next slide from Eagle Pass.
Your three minutes are up.
Thank you, I'm wrapping up. Uh, you'll see also the impact to the neighboring El Cuatro neighborhood just outside of the college, how that neighborhood would be completely severed from all access to the border wall. Uh, if you all have any questions or need additional resources or information, please let us know. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Next, we have Daniel Nicholson.
You also have a presentation, sir?
Uh, yes, that's, that's what she'll be, she'll be handing to you. Thanks so much, Chairman and trustees, this evening, for, for taking our, our presentations.
We'll wait till she finishes, sir.
Perfect.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, thanks so much, as, as was shared. My, my name is Daniel Nicholson. I'm the Chief Operating Officer over at the Rio Grande International Study Center. And just to dovetail off of what Martin, uh, my colleague just shared, we wanted to dive into value, right, to, to land value, because that is potentially what is at stake here. Um, just to skip through the first slides, as far as the sources, we pulled this information from the same sources that, that Martin's, uh, that Martin's information just came from. If you'll skip to the, uh, Laredo College property market value, you'll see, uh, that the property value is roughly $180 million. Uh, for some context, that is two times the value of all of the remaining parcels of city land combined, which is valued at $90 million. So what this is to say is that this wall disproportionately has the opportunity and ability to impact this institution for higher learning and the property that, that you all are stewards of. Just to, just to comment, I think we all understand property value, right? I, I think, I think that's something that the, the, the general layman can understand pretty simply. For, for some perspective, in 2018, this same property's market value was $60 million. It has tripled, it has more than tripled in the past seven years. But what happens to the value of this property when a wall goes up and this riverfront property that has been enjoying increase in value continues to decrease in value? I think that's, that's what is, that's what's on the horizon if this wall goes up. That next slide, again, is just, uh, it's a photo of this property. Um, beautiful piece of, of riverfront property. Uh, the next slide shows a breakdown of the top eight parcels of city-owned land, uh, where you'll see that eight of the 77 city parcels of land carry about 90% of the value. So the, the top, the top eight parcels of land that are owned by the city have a value of about $80 million. Again, just a fraction of what the value of this property is. Um, and, and moving, moving right along, the other 69 parcels of land only contribute an additional $10 million in value to, uh, to these, to these market values. To, to sum up, I, I think these, these last two slides, it's just where we're showing you where we got the data from. We all have access to this data. This is from, from WebCAD, um, and we've used quite a bit of sources here. I, I think to, to wrap up in closing, what's at stake here is not just market value. What's at stake here is all the future opportunities of growth and revenue and income to this, uh, to this institution of higher learning that would be gone forever as soon as that wall goes up.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. I believe, I believe those are, those were the ones that signed up for public testimony. Just, uh, I want to put something on the record. Thank you for, for all, for all of you coming out here and showing your support. And for the public, uh, and for the audience that we have, we're not the ones putting up the wall. It's the government, so I'm, I'm just, you know, so that way the public knows it's not Laredo College doing that. So, uh, with that being said, we're going to go ahead and move on with our agenda. Once again, thank you all for, all of you that came out and spoke. Thank you so much. You, you guys have a great day. Uh, we're going to move on to item number four, recognitions and introductions by Mr. Ruben Villarreal. Thank you.
Good evening, Board President Rangel, esteemed members of the Board of Trustees, Dr. Ramirez, Vice Presidents, faculty staff, and distinguished guests. My name is Ruben Villarreal, Public Information Officer for Laredo College. It is my privilege to highlight recent recognitions and to formally introduce personnel updates that represent LC's ongoing commitment to excellence.
For the record, we'd like to recognize Ms. Karina Elizondo. It's approximately 6:01 PM.
Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Villarreal.
Oh, you're good. Thank you. Uh, we begin with Agenda Item 4A, Jobs and Education for Texans. That's the Jet Truck Driving Program. The Continued Education Department submitted a grant application to the Texas Workforce Commission for the Jobs and Education for Texans Grant, also known as JET, and they received notice of a grant award of $109,083. Under this grant, the Continuing Education Department will acquire one state-of-the-art truck-driving simulator, which will expand their current CDL simulator lab. This equipment will integrate simulation-based driver training into the professional truck-driving program. The equipment will be located at the South Campus, where LC's CDL program resides. The objective is to train 80 students in different visual scenarios, atmospheric conditions, road surfaces, and any other situations a professional driver may encounter while performing their job. The plan is to complete this project within a year. This grant was made possible through the efforts of Ms. Brenda Martinez, Continuing Education Director, and Mr. Francisco Reyes, Grant Writer. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Are they here? Please stand and be recognized. Thank you so much. Thank you.
We move on to Agenda Item 4B, Introduction of Personnel and Personnel Actions. We'll start with the new hires. I'm going to mention your name, just stand and be recognized, and then at the end, you all will go to the front to take a picture. We start with the Cafe Manager, Yaritza Cadena. Administrative Assistant I for Workforce Education, Samantha N. Flores. Staff Accountant for Development, Anna M. Ochoa. Teacher Assistant at the South, Edna V. Sandoval. Director of Enrollment Systems, Osiel Vasquez. Moving on to Promotions, now Assistant Director of Student Discipline/Title Line Deputy Coordinator, Veronica A. Garcia. Veronica A. García. The promotion is Environmental Health and Safety Coordinator, Stephanie R. Moreno. That is the introduction of personnel and personal actions. If you all can come to the front.
Can we go ahead and take a picture with them? Can we first take a picture with the people in charge of the grant? Take a picture with them and then we'll take a picture with you right after them, please. Board members of.
Once again, congratulations on receiving the JET grant. Congratulations. Thank you.
Once again, congratulations for the for the for the people that worked on the JET and for the new personnel. Welcome to Laredo College. We're going to move on to Item Number Five, Laredo College Student Government Association Report. Ms. Bayesteros, go ahead, ma'am, thank you.
I had a slideshow, I don't know if it's working, is it working? A presentation? Oh, yes. No? Yes, our advisor submitted it. Pedro Libra.
Okay, Ms. Bayesteros, while they look for it, do we want to go ahead and move? And just give us a couple of minutes while they load it? We're going to go ahead and board committee reports. We're going to go ahead and start with Six A Student Success Committee Report by Ms. García. Go ahead, ma'am.
Yes, we had a really good, very long meeting, but I'm going to try to be as concise as I can. First, we had it on Monday and we talked about severalish, several things on the on the agenda. The first is a Fall Enrollment Report from Ms. Jessica Trevino. For enrollment in 2025, the total enrollment is ten thousand nine seventy-four, which is up from 2024. Currently, we have fifty-eight hundred plus students enrolled versus the twelve hundred that we had at this time last year. So we're up over three thousand nine hundred students. So congratulations. Financial aid, last year we had ten thousand one hundred and forty-five applications and we dispersed over thirty-one million dollars. This year, up to date, we already have nine thousand six hundred applications and we've dispersed fifteen point two million dollars. Students receive notifications of all this information via self-service, email, phone, and the next disbursement, they're going to receive the information on the reporting date. Then graduation. Graduation is going to be held on Friday, December the twelfth at ten AM at the Sames Auto Arena. We had five hundred and eighty-four eligible students and four hundred and twenty-one are confirmed to attend. The diplomas will be available to them on January the fifteenth at the Registrar's Office and the transcripts are available on December the seventeenth, also at the Registrar's Office. Next, we went on to the General Education Core Curriculum Report by Dr. Marisela Rodríguez de Gerina. This report is required and has required annual submission per Senate Bill thirty-seven. There were no significant changes this year. Our Laredo College maintains a forty-two hour core curriculum, mostly of three-hour courses. There are some four-hour courses that are in math and in science. Our core curriculum supports seamless transfers to other Texas institutions through our articulation agreements. The component areas of this core curriculum are communications, math, life and physical sciences, language, philosophy, culture, creative arts, US history, political science, social behavioral science, and component area, and then a component area option. Next, we went on to a presentation by Dr. Marisa Guerrero and Bianca Cubriel on the Study Abroad for the Basel Students. Fifteen students are going to be traveling to Spain during May semester, from May thirteenth to the twenty-second. They are going in Spain to visit Sevilla, Cordoba, Granada, Granada, I'm sorry, and Madrid. The academic course they use for that is HRPO fourteen ninety-three and they have pre-travel readings and research before they get there. Thereafter, the activities that they are going to do abroad are international, I'm sorry, instructional sessions, guest lectures, company visits, data collection, and cultural excursions. After they come back post-trip, they will have reflection, a portfolio that's due, and a final project that is due. The faculty leads for this that will be attending with them are Dr. Guerrero and Ms. Cubiel. Next, we went on to Pathways to Success by Ms. Performance and Funding by Ms. Sandra Cortés. This Pathways to Success Center is the former Adult Ed and Literacy. Then it's funded by the Texas Workforce Commission since nineteen, since 2014. It serves approximately eleven hundred plus participants annually, including one hundred and twenty internationally trained professionals. Usually, they're certified from Mexico. Programs include ESL, GED, EL Civics, which is English Language Civics, Essential Skills, Digital, Financial, and Family Literacy, Integrated Education and Training, which consists of credentials, a preparation, and supplemental courses. The incentives include GV vouchers, transportation assistance, flexible schedules, and it is supported by thirty-five adjunct instructors. The funding began this year with approximately about fifty percent of what we received in the past. And that is due to federal aid changes. Historically, Laredo College has expended all the funds except for in 2023, 24, we returned two hundred and one thousand dollars due to reduced enrollment and laptop purchases. The program has earned a best-in-class four times in the last six years, which is wonderful. And the goals are to increase enrollment, maximize resources, support to and support tuition for workforce programs. Next, we went on to Continuing Education Performance Highlights, also from Ms. Cortés and Ms. Martinez. We have received multiple grants to support the program growth. In healthcare, enrollment increased and new courses were added. In transportation, Training Center, we have an average of sixty students and our goal is a hundred. We have CDL discounts for Class A, which is truck driving. And it's the discounts that we have went from like three thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine to two thousand five hundred. So almost fifteen hundred dollars, right? That we have reduced it. And for bus driving from two thousand five hundred, it is now at a thousand five hundred. So we think that that's really excellent. The tuition assistance is available and students test here at Laredo College. For Business and Professional Services, there's a strong demand for bookkeeping, QuickBooks, and real estate. For workforce preparation, they added hospitality certifications and substitute teaching certificates increased by over a hundred students or certificates. Professional Development and Customized Training. We have expanded computer applications, CPR First Aid and Forklift Certifications, and they've more than doubled. Laredo College continues to host job fairs to support student employment. The academic calendar for this year was presented. It is for the next three years. It really has not changed much from what we've had in the past. We do coordinate with our stakeholders and people that affect Laredo College and affect them. And and it will be presented later today. And lastly, is our student scholarships presenter, Mr. Renee González. The endowments have increased by over half a million dollars, reaching four point four million last year. The Fall Twenty Twenty-Five Scholarships is seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars plus awarded to five hundred and eighty-five students. Last year, one point six million was awarded to over fifteen hundred students. And the year before, eight hundred and seventy-five thousand plus was awarded to nine hundred and one students. Also, the donor designated scholarships and related revenue continue to rise. Right now, they are over eight hundred thousand from the prior year. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. García. Are we ready for Ms. Bayesteros? Yes. Go ahead, we move back to Item Five, Laredo College Student Government Association Report. Ms. Bayesteros, go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. Good evening, Board and Audience. Today, I'm just going to share the key student updates from October and November. They highlight a lot of engagement, community partnerships, academic innovation, and SGA initiatives. In the last two months, LC has offered more than forty student engagement opportunities. We expanded wellness services. Thank you. Cultural programming and community outreach. We also strengthened our donor support and launched important new academic initiatives. SGA has also increased student advocacy and hosted multiple supported events. So in October, there's like multiple slides for each month. But this is just student engagement and campus life. The Office of Student Life hosted ghost tours every Thursday, which was very highly attended. There was always so many people and they were always sold out. And it was completely free for students. And then they opened their last, their very last one to the community as well. And that one was like super packed as well. We also had Fall Fest. If you guys had the opportunity to attend, it was very full, very fun. We always have a good Fall Fest, tree lighting, Fun Fest, things like that. We also have our annual pumpkin patch that the Office of Student Life also hosts and they decorate in front of the kaisers in very nice, very fall themed, super cute. The Reagan Esports Department had the tacos in terror, which partner, SGA partnered up with them. And we gave snacks, popcorn, drinks, things like that. So they were watching The Conjuring, eating some tacos, and it was really nice. It was a really good outcome. There was a lot of students there as well. The library also hosted Whiskers and Spirits, which I think is super cute. It was for the past animals that students had and they passed away and they celebrated them on the day of the dead. Moving on to Wellness, Culture, and Awareness. We had Mindful Moment, which was stress relief activities like coloring and guided relaxation for students who were going through finals and they had, they were stressing and they just needed a little moment to relax. We also had World Esports Day, so they celebrated our esports teams, the different esports teams that we have here. The nursing program decorated their tree in honor of breast cancer awareness. So it was very pink, very pretty. And we also celebrated World Teacher Day, so they had like their luncheon there. Moving on to Academic Exploration and, and they hosted a three-D printing event where students actually got to go and work with the three-D printers and print things out and learn how it works and mess around with it and move around and things like that. They also launched their Study Abroad Program, which was announced right now, which I think is very, very cool. I don't know if that's a correct term, but especially here in LC, we don't, we don't get a lot of things like that. And to see it coming and happening here and it's going to keep on going is just like really heartfelt. The e-learning hosted their spooky confessionals that they always do every year, I'm assuming, because they had it last year as well, which students and faculty members are allowed to submit scary stories and they read it to different students and online and in person. So both of our online students and our in-person students get the same events. And then the Health Science Department hosted tours to middle school and high school students, which I think was super amazing as well, so that they get to experience what LC has to offer. And we like that we bring in more students. Moving on to Community Engagement and Service, we had Make a Difference Day with Tamiu, where we, we cleaned and we painted trees and we painted, we planted trees, sorry, and we painted murals and we just beautified shared spaces here in Laredo. We also hosted the LC Police National Night Out. So a lot of families got to go and they were there in their little booths and having different events and eating food and things like that. There was multiple trick-or-treat events. There was one at the Health Science, which they hosted for the Sacred Heart School. And there was another one in the South Campus hosted for the Carmelo Prada, the Little Palominis. And they got to walk through the school and they got to get little treats and for Halloween. We also, moving on to Community and Donor Support, we had the Art Gala. And then we had the Palomino Pantry donations. The Falcon donated to the Palomino Pantry and so did the Council Seven. And there's some pictures that you guys can see. And then moving on to Student Engagement and Cultural Events, we're now in November. They had the Opening Night for Working the Musical. And I believe it's already over. If you got to see it, it was very nice and students go in for free with their student ID. They also had the Giving Gallery, which ends December fifth. So if you guys have a chance to go and view it, it's very pretty. I know they sometimes have some in the summer and I would always take the students from the orientation groups to go and see the gallery and it was always very nice. So if you ever have a chance to go see the work that students here do, it's, I. Wait, you should go. The mariachi performance with Juan Capetio and students was for, was completely free for admission and they played there in the chapel. I heard it was a very nice event and everything turned out very well. Moving on to Community Partnerships and College Traditions, the LC Golf, they had their LC Golf Classic. You can see there in the picture. They also had their Veterans Day observance, sorry. The Media Partner Appreciation Breakfast and the EMS Program Service have been assisting our community a lot. Like for Make a Difference Day, they participating in autism-friendly trick-or-treating and they are also assisted in Fall Fest. So they've been moving. The Academic Innovation and New Opportunities in November. The LC Television launched their new series of alumni interviews. In 2026, the academic programs that have been launched are the Associates in Science in Data Analytics and the Bachelors in Data Analytics. So if you guys know anyone or if the students know anybody who's interested, they're having that next year. And they just released these pepper robots. They're kind of scary, but they are supposed to be very good working and enhance student support and engagement. They just released two right now and they're supposed to like help students a lot. If you had the opportunity to see them when they got launched, if you didn't, that's how they look. And there's more to come. Student Support and Basic Needs. The Office of Student The Office of Student Life is giving away free turkeys to students while supplies last. They're going to do it tomorrow at one thirty. So if you guys know any students or if you are a student, they're going to give out free turkeys while supplies last. So I suggest you go and get a free turkey if you haven't bought one, because there's no more turkeys at this time. The Laredo Rotary Club donated to the Palomino pantry. So as you can tell with these slides, the Palomino pantry is very loved. They're getting lots of donations. We had our SGA meeting with Dr. Ramirez, which we got the opportunity to to regard our improvements and advocacy priorities for the school. We had ongoing discussions on campus needs, facilities, and student experiences. Hopefully, everything that was brought up will be in motion to make extreme changes in how students see and experience the college. SGA, student engagement and contributions. We had the breast cancer awareness event, which we gave out pink donuts and pink little ribbons that the students got to wear. And then we just let them know a couple of information about the breast cancer awareness and how we could help and how we could support others in need, right? We also supported the terror and tacos, like I mentioned earlier. And we also just donated to both of our Palomino pantries with little food snacks to grab, like on the go, quick and easy for students. As well as very needs, like necessities for groceries for students as well. One of SGA's major initiatives right now that we just finished working on, well, we're still in the process, but it gets finally almost done, is the first generation ceremony. So the first generation ceremony is, we're going to host Laredo College's first ever first generation ceremony for students. It's going to be in, on December fourth. And it basically going to celebrate students who are first in their families to pursue higher education. And we're very excited to honor them. The plan is for them to have one family member to actually court them and to be on stage with them. So we're very excited. Hopefully you guys can save the date and the time. Does anyone have any questions?
Great job, Ms. Bayasteros. And for those that say you guys aren't doing anything, you guys are doing a lot. But I really enjoyed that, that first generation. That's, that's a really beautiful, you know, ceremony. Ms. Bo Canero, you could put that, if you could send it to our calendar, please. I think that's a very good thing. Chair recognizes Ms. Elizondo.
I just want to say congratulations. I'm so proud of you and the entire Student Government Association. I was a student government officer twenty-two years ago. So I always look forward to this part and it makes me so proud. I know for this budget, we were able to increase the budget for student government and so is student life and student travel. So we're here supporting y'all and I'm so proud of everything that y'all do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other comments? No? Thank you. Great job.
Thank you. Before ending this, I just wanted to recognize our new twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Student Government Association Group, if that's okay.
Yes, go ahead and introduce them. And if you could please stand when she introduces you so we could put a name to the face.
Our Vice President, Akemi Nakazono. Treasurer, Alexis Cuajardo. Secretary, Jimena Vazquez. Relations, Alexandra Ramos. Senator Protempor, Maria Reyes. Senator Ariela Rodriguez. Senator Stephen Esquivel. Senator Magali Carolina de la Cruz Coronado. Senator Carla Salas. Senator Christopher Varela. Senator Naila Carranza Perez. Senator Olga Maria Cepeda. Senator Tareli Salinas. Senator Nadia Aguilar.
Congratulations. And I don't think we would, go ahead, Chair recognizes Ms. Garcia.
Listen, I want to let you all know that you all look fabulous with your green shirts supporting Laredo College. I want you to know that the decisions that we make are for you, with you in mind, for you to grow and for everything that you could possibly want to happen at this college to happen. So thank you for giving us your time. And I hope you know that when we make decisions, we always have you in mind. So congratulations and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Chair recognizes Ms. Elizondo.
I just have, I have a question. Are you guys senators at large or do you represent a particular college? At large, okay. I was gonna say, I refer the college board sometime.
I don't think we would probably get to all of you together. So I want to go ahead and take a picture with them. I think it would be great if we could take, the board can take a picture with all of you. Please join me, board members. Short and sweet. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and move on with item six B, Building Committee Report by Ms. Leando. Chair, go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Angel. So on Tuesday, November eighteenth, the Building Committee Meeting was held. Present were myself, Mr. Esteban Angel, Judge Mercurio Martinez, Mistita Vela, Dr. Ramirez, and staff. Thank you all for, for being present. I know that the presenters came from out of town and so it really was important to have as many of our board there as possible. So we had O'Connell Robertson present the twenty twenty-six, twenty thirty-six Facilities Master Plan. It was broken down into three phases and this will be a living document which can change. So they, they were, they broke it down into three phases, phase one, phase two, and phase three. And the projects will be implemented in phases based on available funding sources, including institutional funds, tax notes, and potential future bond proceeds. No immediate fiscal impact is associated with the approval of the master plan. The committee does recommend approval and this will be an item later on in the agenda. Next, we had the discussion of the Laird Hall Building Roof Restoration. The cost is going to be seven hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars. And funding will be from the Deferred Maintenance Fund. This is going to cover twenty-one thousand square feet of the existing roof that will be restored. And so the committee as well recommends approval based on staff recommendation. The next item was the discussion of the building plaques for the Arechiga Hall Building and the Lamar Bunny Vergara Environmental Science Center. We were shown some renderings of potential plaques where it would include the names of the original board who approved the item and then the board members who were on the board at the time that the project was completed. At this time, there are no budgetary considerations, but the committee is also recommending approval for this item. Next, we discussed the purchase of the HVAC controls for Memorial Hall Building. The purpose of this request is to replace and upgrade the building automation system controls for Memorial Hall, ensuring optimal performance and energy efficiency of the HVAC system. This will cost a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars and funds will be coming from the Deferred Maintenance Fund. Committee, based on staff recommendation, is recommending approval. The last item on the agenda was the approval of the contract with Mage Four Group Doing Business as C for Construction for the replacement of a sewer line. We were presented with information, just letting us know how important this replacement is at this time. And so based on staff recommendation, the committee is also recommending approval of this item. That is all I have, Mr. Angel.
Thank you, Ms. Leando. Item six C, Finance and Audit Committee Report by Ms. Ernestina Tita Vela, Chair, go ahead, ma'am.
My committee also met yesterday, at, yesterday afternoon at five thirty. And there was quite a bit on the agenda, so I'm going to shorten it as much as possible. The most, the beginning part was the, a proposal of putting an antenna between us and the river somewhere. And they're doing this, the cellular services are wanting to do this so that we can have better cellular service all over campus, which will really help all of us, because I think everybody here has had problems with that. That was one. And again, this is a proposal and I'm sure it'll be coming up to us again sometime soon. All right. We discussed a lot of replacing of equipment, computers, especially for, for faculty and staff. A lot of, you know, some of them are pretty old. Another thing that we're proposing to, or not proposing, that we're going to replace is some furniture, especially in the library, the conference roof. And believe it or not, that furniture is twenty years old. So that's pretty old. So I think we've done good to keep it looking as nice as it is, because it doesn't look bad at all. The other areas that we discussed was equipment that's needed in the trucking. The C T L, is that right? C D L. And that was the most interesting, because they're, they're buying simulators to where the students can actually sit behind and pretend they're driving a truck. So I think that's neat. I would love to go try it out and see how it works. But I think Dr. Ramirez tried it, so it crashed. But anyway, it's really, it's, it's something that our students have never seen and it'll really help them. Let's see, what else did we discuss? We discussed renewal again of subscriptions for the library. And we discussed the annexation of some property that we have, that we'll discuss that in a minute. And really, we're getting grant applications out for the police department. Things that we need, like, if I'm not mistaken, it's bulletproof windows, right? Windows vests for our officers. Thank God we haven't needed them yet, but you never know. And at least we're prepared. And one of the last things, and I'm just touching on what I thought was important, okay? The last thing is we got a donor request endowment with the matching funds with us, which will really help our students. Any, any little penny helps our students, because we all know the need that they have. All right, any questions? I think the last thing we discussed that I'm sure we'll discuss again is lab fees and liability fees. So that's an item to be discussed. I usually go into a lot more detail, but it was too long.
That's fine, Ms. Vela. Thank you so much. I want to go ahead and thank the chairs, Ms. Garcia, Ms. Leando, Ms. Vela for, for chairing those committees. Okay, we're moving on.
I'd like to make a motion to bring up item nine A and nine J.
There's a motion to bring up nine A and nine J. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
There's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against? Motion passes. Go ahead, nine A, which is approval of the, of the twenty twenty-six through twenty thirty-six Laredo College Facility Master Plan. Mr. Vela?
Yes, good evening, Board President, Mr. Angel. Board members, for the record, Cesar Vela, VP of Finance and Administration. Tonight, we are asking the board to formally approve the twenty twenty-six, twenty thirty-six Facilities Master Plan as presented by the architecture firm of O'Connell Robertson. The adoption of the twenty twenty-six, twenty thirty-six Facilities Master Plan will be providing the comprehensive roadmap for facility improvements, modernization, sorry, and expansion at both the Fort Macintosh and South Campus locations. The planned, the plan aligns with the college's strategic goals of student success, sustainability, fiscal responsibility, and community engagement. This plan was developed through a collaborative process involving data collection, assessment, prioritization, and community engagement. O'Connell Robertson, an architecture and engineering firm with over fifty years of experience in higher ed education design, led the planning process in close coordination with college leadership, faculty, staff, students, and community stakeholders. Tonight, we have with us Mr. Danny Cornejo, Principal with O'Connell Robertson, and Ms. Diana Bravo, Ed Practice Leader, who will be making a presentation to the board.
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Leando.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-six, twenty thirty-six Laredo College Facilities Master Plan. This was presented at committee and it was emailed to all of the board. And as we have heard, it is a live document which can still be changed. But that would be my motion to approve the Laredo College Facilities Master Plan for twenty-six, twenty thirty-six.
I'd like to second it.
There's a motion by Ms. Leana. There's a second by Ms. Vela. I do before we make a, an approval or if it, if it does get approved, I, I do want to thank you for the, for the work that you did. I know that this was a very lengthy presentation that was presented in the Building Committee Meeting. I want to thank staff that took the time and, and pretty much putting, putting the roadmap of what the college is going to be looking for the next couple of years. And like I mentioned in the committee, you know, we, we might not be here. You know, some of the staff might retire or leave, but I think it's, we're setting the, the stones for, for, for pretty much what's going to happen in the future for our college. And again, like Ms. Leando said, it's not, it's not an impact yet. It's a blueprint of, of what, what is happening. It has been emailed to all of us, all the board members. So I want to thank you on, on behalf of the board for the, for the great work and presentation you all did. So again, I call for the, the motion and a second by Ms. Vela, I mean, Ms. Leando motion, Ms. Vela second. Is there anybody, everybody for?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody against? Thank you. Motion passes. Thank you. Drive safe. Have a good one.
Thank you.
Okay, so
Well, Dana, great job.
It's really good.
Ms. Leando went ahead and brought nine J. Ms. Ms. Leando went ahead and brought nine J. Approval Laredo College participation in the in the contribution to the city, contribution of the city Laredo Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone, TERS number one in the downtown Laredo, and develop an agreement establishing a funding level and term and any other permanent matters pursuant to Texas Government Code three-one-one Tax Increment Funding Act to become effective during the twenty twenty-six tax year utilizing the twenty twenty-five tax year as initially baseline, possibly co-session pursuant Texas to government code five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one. I go ahead and I bring this item and I'm going to go ahead and have Mr. Ceballos. I want to go ahead and also go ahead and 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 say that we have our one of our councilwomen's here, Ms. Ms. Yarroa, welcome. So, Mr. Ceballos, if you would like to go ahead and give your presentation.
Thank you. Good evening and thank you for having us. And actually, before I get started, I'd like to acknowledge Justin Heather that's also joined us from from the TERS Board. And also, Councilmember Yarroa would like to make some remarks before we get started, so.
Go ahead, Ms. Yarroa.
Good evening and thank you for allowing us to to speak and and present tonight. If I may, as a resident and representative of downtown, I'd like to ask for a moment to imagine what's possible when a community chooses to work together. So imagine a downtown where students can walk from class to internships within walking distance, where small businesses and innovation labs take root alongside cultural spaces, and where our youth don't feel the need to leave to find opportunity because they can see it growing right here at home. Every city has a heart and you can feel ours when you stand downtown. It's a place filled with memories and milestones, but it also carries the weight of what we have allowed to decline. The blight we see today is real and it's a clear reminder of what happens when places are left without the attention they deserve. But this is also a moment in time that invites each of us to step in, to take ownership, and to help build the future we want to see. So when we invest in downtown as one united community, we lay a foundation of opportunity for the next generation. So these challenges are fully within our within our power to overcome when we bring our leadership, our expertise, and our shared commitment together. And so I respectfully ask that the Laredo College join the the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone and your participation would help strengthen this vision and it tells our students and our community that we believe in them and it affirms our commitment to the future of Laredo. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Yarroa. Mr. Ceballos, go ahead.
Thank you so much. So I want to also thank, I know I called each of you and I met with pretty much almost everybody and provided, you know, highlights of of what we're looking at in terms of this this board or this it is a board. So the idea is when you have a TERS, I think all of you understand it now, is basically you're using a tool to help redevelop a distressed area. And what we're asking the college is really to join in that effort. The city formed the TERS in twenty seventeen. I have some slides. I'll go through that in a minute, but I want to just give you the background. The idea of this tool is to essentially reinvest, create a tax base, link governmental entities, in this case, you represent your constituency as students, represent your constituents in a way that benefits them as well as benefits the overall community when you redevelop downtown. So with that, I'll I'll charge ahead with with the presentation. You all have have seen this. So the TERS has a boundary. Anything that's raised within this boundary is what we be dedicated into this area. There is not funding that can go anywhere else. And we'll talk a little bit about the mechanism that does that. But essentially, for everybody that's here, that's that's the zone. It's pretty much the central business districts, business district. It does not include residential properties. So so generally, that's the area. The zone was created by the City of Laredo in twenty seventeen. It's a thirty-year period. The zone will operate for for thirty years. It has roughly twenty years left. It's essentially to put together a plan and implement for improvements related to public infrastructure, sidewalks, lighting, landscape. It's very basic and that's really what the TERS has done. It's still, even though it's it's almost ten years in, in terms of its growth, it's still in its infancy for the obvious, right? Downtown is severely deteriorated. So this effort is really to have you join in this idea that we need all hands on deck. The strategic purpose, I've mentioned it now a few times. The focus cannot be private property. This is only public improvement. So your participation is safe in in that regard. You're not going to improve anybody's private property. The mechanics or the technicalities behind the zone is we establish a baseline year, which in this case would be twenty twenty-five. Any redevelopment that occurs after that tax baseline would then be dedicated, we consider it an increment. We're asking you to consider participating at a hundred percent level. We'll show you that number in a minute. So essentially, it's that gray area that would actually be dedicated into the escrow account. It's not your existing baseline. So if we do nothing, if we don't raise any funding, we don't increase our tax base, you gain nothing, right, as a taxing body? If you if you join and there's redevelopment, if everybody gets together, what Councilmember Yarroa said, and we beautify and we restore our downtown to the beauty it had before, we will raise funds at the end of the twenty forty-six. That all is gained for the college, right? Because the TERS period ends, you basically increase the tax base. You will gain that tax base at the end of the of the period. So I think all of you understand that as well. These are some of the things that that have begun to to be redeveloped or restored or beautified. So it's you you see an additional walking area that's on Saragossa Street. We essentially creeped into the street about five feet and we developed, we we created a level walking surface at the top by the storefronts and then at the bottom leading towards the outlet. So this is some of the work. This is our first project. This is a mural that was funded. We dedicated roughly about maybe three percent of our total budget to murals, nothing large. But this is this is one that's it's the first one we did. And I think you you would agree that it's it's kind of a lovely asset to add to to the Tangilo Parkway. This is an architectural rendering of the Altitudinello Parkway. It may end up looking a little different in terms of how much pavement and sidewalk and in the mix, but generally, that's the idea. This is wayfinding. This is in we're in the process of getting this finalized and designed, but generally, there'll be some wayfinding that we leverage. We involved the Convention and Visitors Bureau to help us fund some of this some of this work and leveraging some funds. This site is currently in construction. It will be delivered. It was supposed to be delivered by the end of this month. It's been pushed about a few days. It'll probably be up and and beaming by second week of December. So that's currently the footing will probably be be placed and poured early next week. And again, this this is funding that's already in place. Those are those are old land projects. So this slide, number ten, is really the meat of the financing part of this, right? So how much does how much is the investment if we participate? Because the redevelopment is relatively low and small at this point. Your anticipated annual investment in your participation, about twenty-one thousand dollars, right? So a lot of folks, and I've described this to everybody that I spoke to, all of you, is a lot of people think that the TERS, this TERS has a lot of money there. Look at the annual numbers that we're picking up. So the reason we're able to do some of those projects is because we bonded the first four years and and raised two-point-three million. But then you look at the subsequent years, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. Twenty-five is two forty. It's actually an actual number. That's what we're raising. So it would make it a little more. With the county, the county has recently joined. We're in the process of signing final documents with them. It's got all the approvals. It's gone through Commissioners Court, City Council, so that's we're just signing documents. Their participation at at next year will be about thirty-one thousand dollars. So this is and you're welcome to ask me any questions at any point if there's any. But this is this is kind of the meat of the the investment. Looking ahead, and there's a few bullets I think I've already spoken about most. I think I can't beat Councilmembers a description of why we would want to join as a college, right? So a successful city requires a prosperous downtown, right? Our student connecting the students to redevelopment that will happen in the downtown area if we're all successful. I think that's important. Connecting housing, like having housing options where you can have students, faculty, staff, others that are coming to their downtown campus actually consider living downtown. I think that's also advantageous for for all of us in the community. There's obviously other things that could happen there. Internships, things that that revolve around the workforce, construction trades, that kind of thing. Even retail's not going back to what it used to be, but at least bringing back a little bit more retail or commercial into the commercial business district, that's going to be very helpful. One of the added, he Justin wears two hats, so he's on the TERS Board, but he also chairs the downtown Business Improvement District, which is actually raising funds to help with the to help supplement what the city does in terms of cleanup, landscaping, and we know their downtown needs a lot of help from everybody involved, not just the City of Laredo, private property owners. So that's another piece that's that's different. We didn't have the Business Improvement District in place. That's going to be critical. So anything that the TERS puts in place, whether it's trees, sidewalks, whatever it is, Business Improvement District should help us manage and keep that in place. I only have one more slide after this and then I'll wrap up for any questions. But the last part of this is really to give you the projects that are ongoing. We leveraged some money. The Etravida Improvements is is next. First, we did Saragossa, then we're doing Etravida. Those are about five blocks. Two blocks that will do both sides, both sidewalks. Tree, again, sidewalks, trees, lightning is our basis. The Etravida Monument, which I described, the wayfinding signage, Salinas Improvements. We leveraged TERS money and got some tech stock money through the MPO. We got a million dollars with from them. And and we're actually doing less than than two-hundred-and-fifty because we got a discount for being economically distressed. Well, we'll take it, you know, so so it's actually a little less than two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. But that's that's our budget. The Parkway we've talked about and then the murals number. The rest is really more strategic, again, all hands on deck. I think all of you understand the mechanics of a TERS. This is a TERS that is symbolic of a traditional TERS, where you go into a distressed area and you try to beef it up with everybody participating to raise it again to to its glory, right? Unfortunately, tourism is not really coming back the way we've some of us have seen it downtown. So we've got to reinvent together to make to make it successful. I think I think for the most part that that's our presentation. We'll answer any questions at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Ceballos. Is there any questions by anybody?
I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead, Ms. Leando.
I move that the Laredo College Board of Trustees approve the participation in and contribution to the City of Laredo Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone number one, situated in downtown Laredo, Texas. The participation and contribution in this TERS will take place after the City of Laredo and Laredo College enter into an agreement acceptable to both parties, establishing a funding level and term along with other matters relevant to the TERS and Laredo College's participation.
I second that motion. We we have to judge, we have to go ahead and go individually. But before we do that, I want to go ahead and commend you for what you've done, Ms. Yarroa. It's great that you're actually fighting for downtown. I also, you know, I have, there's a former District Eight Councilwoman as well here, Ms. Leando, and I had the privilege to sit with her in council and she was a huge fighter, just like you are, for the downtown area. And I was so happy to always support her on on her on on her wanting to revitalize downtown. And I think this is just a remarkable tool to help. So congratulations on on the great presentation and all the hard work that you've done. I'm going to go ahead and call for the question.
I second that.
I have to accept it. So the judge is accepting it, so I'm going to go one by one. Ms. Ms. Elisondo? Oh, go ahead, Ms. Newsom.
Yes, I was going to ask if you could go into executive session.
You want to go into executive session?
Because on here it said that possible.
Yeah.
Right? Possible co-session.
Okay, so we have a motion. Okay, do you want to rescind your motion while we go to executive? So, okay, so we have a motion to go to executive session. Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, there's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against? No? Yeah, go ahead.
Meetings Act, sorry, apologize. Let me cite the section of the Open Meetings Act. So it would be five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one for legal advice.
And Mr. Our legal counsel, and if depending on the questions that Ms. Newsom has, can we have Mr. Ceballos go? At first, let's listen to Ms. Newsom's questions. And if we do need some some advice based on the, you know, the explanations, we could probably call you. So we could just give us a couple of minutes while we go to executive session?
Sure.
Motion to.
Yes.
All of that. So it is approximately six fifty-nine and we'll be going and going to executive session. Thank you. We call this Trustee Leadership Conference, which is myself, Ms. Ramos, Ms. Leando, Ms. Benavides Garcia, and Ms. Alexander. I'm going to go ahead and allow my colleagues to say a couple of words, whoever would like, from the ones that went to to show to share a little bit about your experiences. Who would like to start? Ms. Leando, go ahead.
Thank you. I'd just like to say very briefly that this was a great opportunity for us to learn about what's coming up in in the world of community colleges and also to network with other Board Trustees and hear about how they're implementing change in their own communities. Some of the things that I think we heard over and over again at the different sessions were how important technology is now and how it's really taking over the way we teach our students and how it needs to be a main focus for us in the future, as well as AI and how we need to start to accept it more in especially with the work that we see from our students. AI is here and we need to embrace it. That's basically what they kept saying over and over again. So it was a great conference and I just thank this Board for the opportunity to participate in that.
Thank you, Ms. Leando. Ms. Alexander?
That was my first time there at the Association for Community College Trustees and it was really interesting to to be part of it. And also, I think the theme of it was innovation and change. And for many of us, I think, including myself, I think when you think of AI, it kind of intimidates. It's like no longer like a technology project. It's become reality. And that was part of the theme and the overall consensus that for us to be successful, we've got to embrace AI and and start incorporating it into into our daily life here at the Laredo College. So it was very interesting and I'm glad I was part of it.
Thank you, Ms. Ms. Garcia.
Yes, I agree with Ms. Alexander, Ms. Leando. Really, I mean, that was what the main topic of this conference, this national conference, was AI. And I know that everybody is kind of, you know, not scared, but it's like, you know, you feel nervous and I'm sure the teachers feel nervous. I mean, the kids probably don't, but you know, the adults in the room, you know, we do. However, you know, what they said is like, they said, I guess, maybe over twenty years ago or twenty-five years ago, that they were saying, hey, you know, your phone, your phone is going to be your computer one day and you're going to and people did not believe it. And sure enough, our phones are our own personal computers. I mean, they keep everything from our calendars to our notes, to our emails, to everything. So for us to embrace that, which was very, very interesting. And I know we have a lot of work to do on that. Another thing I did want to say, and I know we talked about it, all of us that went, we want to tell you how proud we were of Laredo College. Ms. Jackie Levan Ramos participated in a session and she represented us very, very well. Also, Mr. Angel and Dr. Ramirez participated. They put a session together as well with a fusion and they made us very proud, you know. So it was a very good conference and I feel like Laredo College is in it. So.
Well represented.
Well represented, yes, sir. So thank you, everybody in this room, because your hard work makes it all happen. So thank you. Congratulations to you guys. All did a great job.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Leando, Ms. Alexander, and Ms. Garcia. I'll just say a couple of things echoing a lot of the stuff. It is very true. You know, AI is here and you just have to have to move with it, right? We I I I want to, Ms. Ms. Ramos is not here, but I also wanted to say, you know, she did a really good job representing Laredo College. And I know she goes out there, you know, representing all of you as well as as our as employees of Laredo College. I was privileged to sit and and sit with Dr. Ramirez and presenting. I was privileged to sit and sit with Dr. Ramirez in presenting a session based on where we're at on technology. And I was very proud to being able to say that, what Dr. Ramirez mentioned in a way that, you know, I was a huge advocate, you know, to pushing technology into our institution. Because, again, technology is here, and we have to adapt, and we have to move with them and make it a lot easier because kids out there, like Ms. Garcia said, they focus on the phone, right? So I was very privileged to sit there and be a colleague of Dr. Ramirez. A huge, 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 huge to fill. But because of our presentation, Illusion went ahead and even invited us now to their conference that they're having, I believe in April. And they want us to be presenters again, Dr. Ramirez and myself. And the one that also got invited to present in that presentation was Ms. Leendo. And the reason for it, and I think it's great because you have, you have, I don't want to say I was going to approve it, but I was a huge component on trying to push technology, and of course, the president of the college. But then Ms. Leendo is going to bring a huge perspective of not just the trustee in approving this, but also as a student. And what's the benefit of the technology that we adopted? And how it's helping her being able to sit on both ends as a student and as a board member? And I think that's going to be remarkable because she could easily speak on both sides. So we welcomed that invite. And of course, all our board members are invited as well. And that's a great thing. So again, once again, it was a privilege to going out there and sitting in a session representing all of you. So thank you so much. Moving on, 7B Foreign Trade Zone request, Dr. Ramirez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Trustees. This month, or in the last two months, we've had three requests for foreign trade zone designations. Discon International, Inc., located at 1119 Juarez Avenue. Salinas Warehouse and Distribution, Inc., located at 5300 Santa Maria. And Tramitaciones Grupo Forwarding, Inc., located at 13493 Port Drive here in Laredo, Texas. All three letters of concurrence have been submitted to the City of Laredo in support of their requests.
Any questions? No, thank you. Item 17, notification of serving of alcohol beverages by the outside entity in Laredo College facilities. As per Laredo College Board Policy, GDBA local community expression and use of college facility conduct on college district premises. Dr. Ramirez.
Yes, sir. So Laredo College Board Policy, GDA Local, requires us to inform you that over the next several weeks, we have external entities using our facilities, community entities renting our facilities for their either theater performances, holiday events, and there will be the serving of alcohol. They are adhering to all of our policy and requirements to have our law enforcement representation. And so my job is to notify you and let you know that this is a possibility.
Thank you. Any questions by any trustee? No, thank you. 17, status of Laredo College District Board Members requiring trainings as per Texas Education Code Section 61.084, Texas Government Code 551.005, and 2054.5191, and legal policies, DBD Legal Board Members, orientations and trainings, and BI Legal Reports. Dr. Ramirez.
Yes, sir. This is just to acknowledge to the board that each year, board member status of their required trainings are noted. We've attached them to the board information for this board meeting. As per BBD Legal and BI Legal, the minutes of the last regular meeting held by a governing board of public junior college district during a calendar year must reflect whether each member of that governing board has completed any trainings required to be completed by the member under the Education Code 61.1084 as of the meeting date. Education Code 61.084F, emails with trainings, information was sent on October the 2nd and October the 28th. And I'd like to report that all board members are 100% compliant with the regulations for this year.
Thank you, Dr. Ramirez. Any questions? I want to go ahead and thank my colleagues for complying at 100%. This is a really good thing. This helps us to be able to be in compliance with any regulations that we are obligated to be. So thank you, board members. 17, Laredo College Marketing Plan, Dr. Ortiz and Ms. Santana. Go ahead.
Good evening, Board President, Mr. Angel, esteemed board members, Dr. Ramirez, administration staff, and guests. My name is Dr. Diana Ortiz, and I'm the Vice President of Institutional Advancement. I, along with Ms. Joanna Santana, Director of Community and Media Relations, will be presenting some information about the marketing campaign highlights that took place between February 2025 to August 2025, closing out our programmatic campaign that we had. In February of 2025, Joanna and I met with over 30 media vendors across all platforms to discuss how to best promote Laredo College. We know, and many of you have seen a lot of the great things, that many of the departments, including the marketing team, what they've done to promote institutional events. All Fest, Fun Fest, the tree lighting, many, many student events are promoted very heavily, and they're very well attended. But we wanted to do something a little different. We wanted the intention of how to bring students back between the ages of 24 and 60 could happen. So we visited with the media partners, and we tried to figure out how we could entice this opportunity population. With that said, many of the media vendors agreed that helping tap into that population would make a difference and that they too would be part of something good that might happen. So we focused on traditional students. We focused on trying to get them here, students between the ages of 24 and 60, promoting specific academic and workforce credit programs and short-term community education programs in adult ed and continuing ed. So to make the determination on which programs that we were going to offer, we visited with Dr. Marisela Tijerina to talk to her about the programs, Dr. Roberto Hernandez, so they could tell us which academic and credit programs we were going to focus on. And then, of course, with Dean Cortez on the community education piece, looking at what she wanted to promote for those six months in adult ed and continuing ed. So with that said, we decided to kick off a pilot program, promote in English and in Spanish. And Joanna is going to tell us a little bit about that, along with the pilot programs that we kicked off talking about analytics. So we're going to share the information, and then I'll share some numbers with you as well.
Good evening, board members. Joanna Santana, Director of Community and Media Relations. So as Dr. Ortiz shared with you, we are going to give you just a brief update of the campaign that we ran from February to August 2025. So as Dr. Ortiz mentioned, our campaign target was obviously students centered, students centered with a focus on students from ages 24 to 60. And our goal was to boost enrollment in the different areas, the different courses that we offer, workforce, academic, continuing ed, and adult ed, and to increase the number of students enrolled in in-person classes. And this was a bilingual campaign in English and Spanish, and we'll have some samples for you. So as I'm sure many of you saw throughout those six months that we had the campaign running on billboards, on print media, in TV, radio, we did focus on specific programs in collaboration, like Dr. Ortiz mentioned, with our provost, our associate provost, and Dean Cortez. So we could see which programs really needed that additional push so we could get the word out there and, you know, about enrollment. So we focused on construction management, logistics and distribution, engineering technology, and culinary arts for our workforce programs. For continuing ed, we did dental assistant and patient care technician. Adult ed, we did the GED or the High School equivalency and the ESL program. And for academic, we did the online RN to BSN program. Just to preface this, you're going to be seeing some of our major outlets that we collaborated with, but this is not the complete list. We just wouldn't have enough space or time to go over that. So these are the major outlets that we worked with for TV and print advertising. That's KGNS or Gray Media, Telemundo, LMT, El Mañana, Univision, and Televisa. And here are some samples of some of our print ads that we ran. And again, as you can see, we showcased, these are general like spring semester registration ads, but you can see the different careers showcased there, like the programmatic focus. For our outdoor advertising, we worked with the three major outdoor advertising companies that we have here, Locally, which is Char Media, Lamar, and STX Media. So we've always advertised with these different outlets. STX Media is more recent, something that we implemented with this campaign. As far as Char, some of the things that we did add that we hadn't done before were the 50 metro interior cards, which people who are riding the bus can see it inside the bus, not on the outside, and the two Aguila Bus ads. We did implement that with this campaign. And for Lamar, we did 23 bus shelter ads. And I'm sure you've seen them around town. There's one on Delmar that I see all the time. But we mainly focused, we shifted a little bit the focus to south and central Laredo. So you will see a lot more advertising there right now with our current campaign and definitely with this previous campaign. And here are some sample billboards that you can see. Again, you can see we have an adult education one, a workforce one, and then a CE one. So for digital and social media platforms, again, there's just so many, but we did try to include as many as we could. And this is not only their website, but also their social media platforms. Again, the TECOS was a big, big hit. It's something that we've done in the past, but we did take on additional, you know, things. I know, I hope all of you got your commemorative cups. We had a great turnout there. We had a lot of fun. KGS, LMT, El Mañana, all of those, Noticias en la Frontera, Matinal Muse, those are some of the new outlets that we're working with. La Rancharita is a new radio station that we incorporated. So again, we have a lot of presence digitally and on social media. Two of the particular for me, the most exciting new things that we're doing with social media and digital advertising, we are doing, and we're still doing it for this campaign, but we kicked it off with this previous campaign. We're doing a live, Facebook lives with Noticias Laredo, which is basically Univision Laredo. And they actually have a really big following. They have, last time I checked, it was like 200, close to 250,000 followers on Facebook. So again, and it's tiny there, but I think you can see a better in your presentation. That video alone was like 20,000 people that it reached. Excuse me. And then we have a little video for our Hola Learning.
Welcome to the nation. Today, we're here at Laredo College Downtown Campus to find out more about the logistics and distribution program. Let's check it out. I find myself here with the Global Logistics Center Department Chair, Mr. Joyce Solis. Pay attention a little bit more. What is this program entail?
What does it offer? As you know, Laredo is the number one import in the nation, in North America. So we do have a program here in the college. It's a program that's been around for a long time, but now it's a global logistics center. And our main focus is, of course, logistics, the movement of merchandise, you know, to and from other countries. And we focus on all the procedures, documentation, regulations, and laws that, you know, play a part in that.
What kind of certifications does it offer?
Well, we have three awards. We call them awards, but there's a certificate one, certificate two, and then, of course, there's the associate degree, where the students get a lot of information as far as, you know, what is logistics, introduction to logistics.
I've heard there is amazing hands-on experiences happening out there, that y'all go out there to the fields and all that stuff.
We take them out to go see the actual places where all this is happening. We take them to local warehouses, local customs brokers, places of business. Aside from, you know, what they learn here in our courses, in our program, we also have opportunities for them to interact with our local stakeholders, the local businesses. We have here, we have our monthly trade meetings where CBP comes in along with the local stakeholders, customs brokers, transportation companies. So they can get that extra step in networking, seeing who are the people that run the business in Laredo. And, you know, a lot of good things come out of, you know, knowing and seeing these people.
How exciting was that? Don't wait any longer. Start your career today with Laredo College.
So again, as you can see, these are completely new digital marketing opportunities that we're capitalizing on. We did three Hola Learning segments throughout the campaign. We did that one for logistics. We did construction management, and we did culinary arts. And if you can go back, Mr. New as well. Sorry, back to the video. Yeah. And the one you see on the left, which is the Facebook live that I mentioned, again, not only is it the viewership and the reach that they have, but also we did use those as well, not only for programs and promoting the programs that we offer, but also the events. So like that Flamenco fest, and I know a lot of people had great things to say about it. A lot of people reached out, and people, you know, came to the event, registered for the classes. So it is another avenue that we're very glad to be capitalizing on. Okay, so again, some of our radio advertising. You can see some of the stations that we work with.
And then for our numbers, just so you all are aware of some of the things that have been happening. Of course, yesterday, Ms. Trevino, the day before yesterday, talked about the increase in numbers for all the dual. We're trying to do the same. And when we started this in February, the numbers were for 2024, the total enrollment, dual as well as regular, were 11,027. And it did go up to 11,446, an increase of 419 at the end of August. For the next one, which was of course enrollment, and a lot of that has to do also with the eight-week programs that have been implemented. So kids are able to take two weeks and two weeks. Regular students went from 20,641 to 21,025, an increase of 384. And then, of course, the total enrollment with both dual and regular because we work closely in promoting the recruitment team and everything that they're doing at the schools and helping complement that was 1,157. And then the last thing, this is the analytics program. If the analytics program, this was a pilot program using the go.laredo.edu. And it shows that links driven were 6,297 clicks and links to the go.laredo.edu forward slash enroll. And that ties into the admissions page that we have on our website. And then searches, actual people going, typing in the words 3,580. And then when you look at the different markets of people tapping into that same one, it's Laredo, Dallas, Houston, San Antonio, Nuevo Laredo, and Fort Worth were there. And then you had the clicks with the United States and Mexico. And then, of course, the platforms that are tapping in. So moving forward, we're going to be working closely with enrollment management team to create landing pages and work with the departments to try to tap into where these are zeroing in. This was a pilot, but it was very, very exciting. And I think that working with the enrollment team, working with the program department, I think we'll be able to really see who's come in, what they're interested in, and did they enroll. But right now we're just, this was a little pilot program. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any questions? No, thank you. Thank you, ladies, for your presentation. Moving on to item seven F, Laredo College Golf Tournament, sponsored by Falcon. Dr. Ortiz and Mrs. Espinosa.
Good evening again, board members, President, President Ramirez and administration and staff and guests. Today. Today, we're just going to give you a very quick overview because I know it's, it's fast break. The co-chair to the event was Ms. Diana Espinosa. Everybody knows her. She worked really, really hard on the golf tournament, has done that with me for the past three years. This year, our tournament was November 1st. And we had it once again at the Casablanca Golf Course. And we just want to let you know, I'm going to just go off by what I have here. It was our third annual golf tournament. We did have our grand slam sponsor, Falcon Bank, that so generously supports us on so many of our events. And they once again supported us at this tournament. We had 25 sponsors, eight in-kind sponsors giving us trades for either TV spots, digital boards, different waters, different things that they had. We had six teams that had registered onsite and 105 golfers. So it was a really, really good tournament and we're excited about that. But more than that, we're excited about, we're excited about the amount of money. About the amount of money that we raised. This year, we raised $41,700. Year. Year over year, just so you're aware, in the past three years of the tournaments, we've raised $129,677. And today, available for student scholarships and for the mission of the college, we have $71,000 that are available. So I just want to acknowledge the departments that helped us. It was a huge effort with a lot of different peoples. Yolanda Torres, of course, my admin, the CMRO team, the development team, Mr. Chavez, Melissa Vega, Letty Garcia, Araceli Lozano. Of course, our onsite tournament support, the bursar's office led by Ms. Jessica Trevino, physical plant, Ruben Fieria, emceeing the event, Dr. Marisa Guerrero and the Basshawke students, and of course, the police. So without any of them, none of this would be possible. $71,000 are there for students as well as for the mission of the college. So thank you, Diana, for being a great chair. Thank you to all of you that helped at the, at the tournament. So if you're here, please stand if you all helped out. Thank you so much.
Any, any questions, comments, board members? Chair recognizes Ms. Garcia.
I just want to say that, you know, the people at the Casablanca Golf Course were very complimentary about Laredo College and our golf tournament. They, it's eight o'clock. They, they have, they told me that of all the golf tournaments that they've had, that you all have been the most organized and have put on the best tournaments. So that says a lot because they've had a lot of golf tournaments there with, with, you know, the county. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. And congratulations for all of you. You're honestly helping a lot of kids get scholarships. So thank you so much for your hard work on behalf of the board. Thank you.
And I will add that it was Dr. Ramirez's idea when she first started, she wanted to get this going. And it's just been a great event.
Thank you, Diana, the Dianas. Thank you, both of you. It's, it's, it's really Diana Espinosa's year-round project for us. So thank you, Diana.
Thank you. Seven G Laredo College Education Foundation brushes on the, on the border, brushes on the border art gala update. Mr. Gonzalez and Ms. Hastings, go ahead.
Good evening, Chair. Ronqueta, members of trustees, Dr. Ramirez. For the record, I don't set as a director, I don't have a venture at the college. Apologies, Ms. Hastings wasn't able to make it. She's involved in many organizations and events are Thursday evenings are very busy for them. The evenings are very busy for them, so apologies. Just to give you a little history, the challenge for foundations now has become that most of the grants are asking for operating budgets from the foundations. So this board, as they transitioned from older members to the new members that have been in 2025, decided to create a fund and try to do a fundraiser that would do, that would create that operating budget that would up the grants department to raise funds. Because a lot of times they don't get grants because they didn't have their foundation operating budgets with them. So they couldn't even compete for funds. So we took on this charge, Ms. Hastings decided to take on this charge and create a fundraiser. And which became the brushes through the border, which is the Arts Gala that many of you attended. Thank you very much for joining and for bidding on this, in this event. And just to give you an idea, we had 63 items were auctioned during the event. Including a Gucci bag and diamond rings that were donated by moistureers. 16 of these items were from the Sainz Trust donation. So we were able to get the, and of course, these paintings were donated by local artists, artists from all Laredo. We had artists from the San Antonio area, artists from Houston that donated to Laredo College to do this endeavor. And we're very thankful to our, to our partners, the Mariachis Palominos, who welcomed everyone to the event. The jazz ensemble played during the event, the culinary arts and the arts departments participated and were partners with us during the event itself. And from these events and from the, after receiving money and donating, we gave the foundation donated $500 to the arts department for their programs as a gift to, thanking them for their participation. And we were able to, to raise about $83,000.
Very good, very good, sir. Any, any questions, comments on board? No, thank you, thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Thank you for, for your hard work. Good job. Seven H, Fall Fest sponsored by Falcon Bank Updates, Dr. Roberto and Mr. Rivera.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Ramirez colleagues, Roberto Hernandez, Associate Provost, South Campus Administrator. This evening, we wanted to highlight the tremendous success of this year's Fall Fest celebration at the South Campus. It, it was a great success. Every year it grows more and more, and this year was no exception. It grew tremendous. I mean, there's a ton of people out there. It does take a village, many departments to, to put this together. This year was handled, or it was organized through the Office of Student Life. And this gave students just a tremendous exposure and experience to the planning and the effort it takes to put on an event of this magnitude. The students were just amazing. They had tremendous energy, just, just watching them got me tired. They were just, you know, but, but they were so happy doing all the work and they were there all day from the morning till the evening. And all their interactions with the public was, was just great. They represented the college very, very well. So Monsieur Rivera is going to give some highlights of, of the Fall Fest and, and just kind of paint a picture of, of the tremendous growth that has been happening over the, the past few years in this event.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Hernandez. Greetings, everybody. Pedro Rivera, Director of Student Life here. So I think one of the first things that I want to do is provide everybody an overview of the event. So overall, we had 12 student organizations that were fundraising. Our fundraisers are basically the sales of food. We had a little bit of every, you know, crowd favorites, Sostilotes, Corn in the Cup, Tostadas, Tito's Siberia, Nieves de Garrata. I think Pan Dulce, doing different things, a lot of different things. We had 42 Laredo College departments hosting free activities for our community. And you can see by the number of, of individual booths that we had set up. We also had inflatables, which are definitely a community favorite for, for the kids in the family. We had a petting zoo, which is a first time addition to our Fall Fest. Incredibly successful. It was a great revenue creator for our Lamar Brunyvera Environmental Center. That was the first thing that we did and it was definitely something we'll continue doing. As always, we have lucha maniacs doing our lucha libre performances, performances from elementary schools, mariachis de Palominos, local bands, bands that are actually composed by OLS students, the dance team, things of that nature. And last but not least, we actually had for the first time ever as well, a gay week community health centered mobile clinic on the site. This is a basic overview of how the event looked like from a bird's eye view. One of the main things that we did was that we kind of pushed the stage as close to the highway as possible. And that's by design and intentionally. The more people see our event that, that it's taking place, the more likely it is that they're going to stop by and spend their money for student organizations. And so that was one of the main changes. We did move a couple of things around. We're still trying to figure out what our ultimate and final layout will be for, for Fall Fest. This event changes and evolves every single year. And there's always new things that we're trying to add to the event. And so we're not married to this design and to this layout. It will definitely change. That's intentional as well and entirely depends on, on the changes that we're making and the attractions that we're bringing to the event itself. One of the first things that I want to highlight, that is a key reset or catalyst in terms of the success that we have this year is actually our partnership with Falcon Bank. We did get $50,000 in support for the 2025 and 2026 Fall Fest. I can see a couple of the board members there and administrators are on the picture. The support does not only impact financially, it also helps us by having an ATM on site, which is a huge catalyst for, for spending cash on site the day of the event. But additionally, it also helps us in promotion. There's signage at the branches and there's active promotion coming on behalf of, of Falcon Bank, sorry, to, to ensure that we get as many community members out there as possible. Eventually, this, this partnership of Falcon Bank ultimately resulted in a support and a donation to our bottom line country. And so it's interesting to see how, how efforts led by other departments in our college are leading to, to other things that are ultimately impacting our students through the Fall Fest, but another aspect as well. This is definitely one of the slides that I want to focus most of our attention on because it genuinely, you know, exemplifies the, the growth that we have seen in the event for the past couple of years. This year, we, we fundraised a total of $24,656. $1,400 of that amount is going to the petting zoo. But everything else is going to our student organizations. So it's, it's, this is a huge fundraiser, definitely the, the biggest fundraiser that we have in the fall. You can see the amounts and you can see the percentage growth that we've had in the past three years. That, that jump from 2023 to 2024 of 36% is one of the initiatives that was led by our bursar's department, our bursar's office. And that's basically when we started charging credit cards and debit cards, tap to pay, all the modern forms of, of charging. You can definitely see the change there. You can also see that we grew by 22% this year as well. If the numbers don't lie, which they never do, and, and we stay the way that it is, Fall Fest 2026 will probably generate around $28,000 of revenue for our student organizations. That's a safe estimate, if you want to be optimistic, but realistic at the same time. I genuinely think that Fall Fest will eventually be our biggest moneymaker in comparison to Fun Fest. And that's for multiple different reasons. But the main reason is we don't have as much competition from other citywide events. There's no Jalatenyo, there's no WBCA. Fall Fest is literally the first one in the month of October, the first major event that is offered to the city, to the city of Laredo. And this is very interesting. This is the last thing point that I'll make in, in the funds raised portion of this presentation. In the past seven years, we've actually grown the event by 250%. So we just consider the, the revenue that we're generating for our student organizations. There's, there's a queue, there's a few reasons for the growth. I think one of the first reasons that we definitely have to, to highlight is the fact that Fall Fest, tree lighting, Fun Fest, they're slowly becoming community traditions. I think Fun Fest is very well established. Everybody knows about Fun Fest, it's been going on for 40 years if I'm not mistaken. But the Fall Fest is relatively new. We did have a two-year hiatus because of the COVID pandemic. But we're back and we're stronger than ever and the numbers prove it. Our partnerships are also key. We did get a donation from United Rental that I do want to highlight. They donated the, the 10 tower lights that were present throughout the event grounds. Partnership with Gay Week Community Health Center, partnership with our City of Laredo EMS that was there to provide emergency medical services in case we ever needed them. And lastly, but not least, our partnership with the City of Laredo Solid Waste Department. That was also key in keeping the event grounds clean. You can imagine we had anywhere from 6,500 to 7,000 people. You can only imagine the, the amounts of trash that we generate. And so they were on it, they were on the ball, they were, they were very quick, very effective. We were very appreciative of their collaboration and support. I definitely think we have a greater amount of student engagement than we've had before. And we can simply see this, see this just based on the number of student organizations that we have participating. We had 12 this year. We just added two new student organizations back in September. And so I, I definitely think this number will continue to grow. My personal and professional goal is to have 15 student organizations fundraising next fall. We also had our sponsorships, like I said before, the sponsorship of Falcon Bank is, is definitely something that is a huge difference maker in, in our event. And, and last thing that I will mention in terms of the main reasons for growth is a genuine campus buy-in. Setting up an event of this nature is incredibly time consuming. It consumes a lot of resources, but it's a team effort in every sense of the word. Everything, physical plants setting up, our development team looking for, looking for sponsorships, our event services setting up for the event. Student organizations being able to sell their bursars accepting payments, so on and so forth. Campus police being there to protect us. And, and, and I'm very happy to say and very excited to say, there's buy-in, right? And you know, our departments are reaching out to us or telling us, hey, send us the dates, you know, get on it. And it's always good to see that. It's very refreshing and for us, it's very re-energizing to see that we have this buy-in from our campus. I definitely want to say, like I mentioned before, team effort, takes a village. Special thanks to all the departments that are up there, our Office of Event Services, physical plant, Office of Bursars, Laredo College Campus Police, our purchasing and accounting departments. I'm always rushing VRs and trying to get everything purchased on a quick basis. And so they, they definitely hear from me during those, during those weeks. Our development team, community and media relations. This was incredibly important and we can have a perfectly planned event, but if nobody knows that it's going on, we won't have people there. So every single department that participated, we're genuinely appreciative of their help and we look forward for 2026 Fall Fest. Thank you. Any, Chair recognizes Judge Martinez.
This person, I noticed that, that one of the participants that you have, one of the items, a lucha libre. That frankly, you have to be quite careful. You certainly don't want to have a student injured or it's, it's, you know, obviously it's interesting to have a lucha libre, but at the same time, we gotta have to make sure that, that these kids are, are looked after and, and not end up, you know, unfortunately having, having some kind of an injury.
For, for the purposes of clarity, lucha manias is actually, lucha manias is actually a professional wrestling alliance that we have in the city of Laredo. None of the actual wrestling is conducted by OLS students. Not only that, but we also make sure that they have valid insurance before they, they even step on campus. And so trust us, our safety of the students is paramount for the event and the safety of the community as well. That's definitely something that, that we keep in mind. Thank you. Chair recognizes Bella.
Yes, I'd like to commend you on everything you've done. It's, it's every day, I mean, every time I see there's something new that you're thinking of doing now. Do you sleep at night?
He's, he's young, he could, he could do that. No, I, I am, I am not that young. But, but I think, I think another thing that I've noticed is that a lot of departments are also hosting their events, their own events, their own signature events. And, and that is also very, and re-energizing for us because we get more opportunities to focus on, on bigger events and, and doing different types of events. So I, I will definitely see that. There's definitely more campus buying. We, we definitely have more departments hosting their own stuff. Not everything's coming from the Office of Student Life. Please don't, don't, don't have that misconception. Everybody's kind of pulling their own strengths. Any other questions or comments? No. I just, I want to go ahead and commend you, Dr. Dr. Hernandez and especially to Mr. Rivera. This is really good. I've heard about, I wasn't able to go to this one. I had a wedding that day, but I heard that it was.
Pages 19 through 22, Platt Records, Webb County, Texas, and being more particularly described by the attached meets and bounds. Being all of that certain lot four, block three, Pinto Via Industrial Park, Phase One, recorded in volume 10, pages 19 through 22, Platt Records, Webb County, Texas, and being more particularly described by the attached meets and bounds. Whereas it is found to be in the best interest of the Laredo College District and its residents to extend an annex for college purposes, all those new properties within the city limits of the city of Laredo, not now within the boundaries of the Laredo College District, as is provided by Texas Education Code 130.066. Now therefore be it resolved and ordered that those areas annexed by the city of Laredo set forth and described by meets and bounds. set forth and described by meets and bounds in the four attached ordinances be incorporated and annexed to the boundaries of the Laredo College District for college purposes. Passed at Laredo, Texas on this nineteenth day of November, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Ms. Leando. Again, there was a motion by Ms. Leando, and there was a second by Ms. Bella. And resolution was read. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against? No? Motion passes. Thank you. Item nine C, resolution requesting that the Laredo College Board of Trustees approve the submission of a grant application for a total of seven hundred and eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three in the grant funding by the Laredo College Grant Office for the twenty twenty-six through twenty-twenty-eight Laredo College Police Department Border Crisis Equipment Enhancement Project to the State of Texas Office of the Governor, Homeland Security and Public Safety Office, Mr. Lozano.
I make a motion that we approve the resolution, and I can read it in, if we get a second.
I have a motion by Ms. Leando.
I'll second.
There's a second by Ms. Bella. Go ahead and read resolution, Ms. Leando.
Resolution for Agenda Item nine C. Whereas Laredo College finds it in the best interest of the citizens of Laredo and South Texas that the Laredo College Police Department Border Crisis Equipment Enhancement Project be implemented and operated from January first, twenty twenty-six through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight. And whereas the Laredo College Board of Trustees approves the submission of a grant application by the Laredo College Grants Office in the amount of seven hundred and eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars to the State of Texas Office of the Governor, Public Safety Office for the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-eight Laredo College Police Department Border Crisis Equipment Enhancement Project under the following State of Texas Homeland Security Program. Border Crisis Response NPA Program, State of Texas, FY twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, State of Texas Homeland Security Grant, seven hundred and eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars, E. Grants Application Number five six two six zero zero one. Whereas Laredo College agrees to provide applicable matching funds when required for the said project, but no matching funds are required for this grant application, as noted in the Texas Administrative Code Guidelines. Whereas Laredo College agrees that in the event of loss or misuse of the State of Texas Office of the Governor Funds, Laredo College assures that the funds will be returned to the Office of the Governor in full. Whereas Laredo College designates Dr. Minita Ramirez President as the grantee's authorized official. The authorized official is given the power to apply for, accept, reject, alter, or terminate the grants on behalf of the applicant agency. Now therefore be it resolved that the Laredo College Board of Trustees approves the submission of a two-year grant application by the Laredo College Grants Office for a total of seven hundred and eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars in grant funding for the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-eight Laredo College Police Department Border Crisis Equipment Enhancement Project to the State of Texas Office of the Governor, Department of Homeland Security, duly resolved by the Board of Trustees of Laredo College on the nineteenth day of November, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Ms. Leando. Once again, there's a motion by Ms. Leando. There's a second by Ms. Bella. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against? Motion passes. Thank you. Item nine D, resolution requesting that the Laredo College Board of Trustees approve the submission of a grant application for a total of one hundred and thirteen dollars and ninety-nine, one hundred and thirteen thousand, ninety-nine dollars in the grant, in the grant funding by the Laredo College Grant Office for the twenty twenty-six through twenty-twenty-seven Laredo College Police Department Bullet-Resistant Component for Law Enforcement Vehicles Project, Project to the State of Texas Office of the Governor, Homeland Security and Public Safety Office, Mr. Gabriel Lozano.
I make a motion that we approve item nine D, and I will read the resolution if we get a second.
I have a motion by, I have a motion by Ms. Leando, and I have a second by Ms. Bella. Ms. Leando, please read resolution.
Whereas Laredo College finds it in the best interest of the citizens of Laredo and South Texas that the Laredo College Police Department Bullet-Resistant Components for Law Enforcement Vehicles Project be implemented and operated from March first, twenty twenty-six through February twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-seven. And whereas the Laredo College Board of Trustees approves the submission of a grant application by the Laredo College Grants Office in the amount of one hundred and thirteen thousand, ninety-nine dollars to the State of Texas Office of the Governor, Public Safety Office for the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven Laredo College Police Department Bullet-Resistant Components for Law Enforcement Vehicles Project under the following State of Texas Homeland Security Program. Bullet-Resistant Components for Law Enforcement Vehicles Program, FY twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty-seven, State of Texas Public Safety Grant, one hundred and thirteen thousand, ninety-nine dollars, E. Grants Application Number five six five five one zero one. Whereas Laredo College agrees to provide applicable matching funds when required for the said project, but no matching funds are required for this grant application, as noted in the Texas Administrative Code Guidelines. Whereas Laredo College agrees that in the event of loss or misuse of the State of Texas Office of the Governor Funds, Laredo College assures that the funds will be returned to the Office of the Governor in full. Whereas Laredo College designates Dr. Minita Ramirez President as the grantee's authorized official. The authorized official is given the power to apply for, accept, reject, alter, or terminate the grants on behalf of the applicant agency. Now therefore be it resolved that the Laredo College Board of Trustees approves the submission of a one-year grant application by the Laredo College Grants Office for a total of one hundred and thirteen thousand, ninety-nine dollars in grant funding for the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven Laredo College Police Department Bullet-Resistant Components for Law Enforcement Vehicles Project to the State of Texas Office of the Governor, Public Safety Office, duly resolved by the Board of Trustees of Laredo College on the nineteenth day of November, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Ms. Leando. I had a, I had a motion by Ms. Leando. I had a second by, by Ms. Bella. All in favor?
Governor, Governor Abbott makes us do this. Sorry.
Motion passes. Mr. Lozano, thank you so much for what you do. We really do appreciate it. We're moving on to item nine E, approval of updated on lab fees and laboratory fees by Dr. Maricela. Liability, I'm sorry, liability fees by Dr. Maricela Rodriguez Tijerina.
Maricela Rodriguez Tijerina, Provost Vice President of Academic Affairs. I'm here to present, good evening, board members, Dr. Ramirez, legal team and colleagues. I'm here to present the annual listing of our lab fees and liabilities, fees. Notice that in the packet, you have the list of all our programs. Anything that was added is identified in blue coloration. Anything that was deleted is in red coloration. Lab fee are for our practical courses on campus, and liability fees are for courses, practical courses that happen outside of school grounds.
Thank you. Any questions? No? Can I have a motion?
I motion to accept it.
Aye.
Approve it.
Okay, wait, wait. I had a motion first by Ms. Garcia Benavides, and I'll have a second by Ms. Bella. All in favor? Anybody against? No? Motion passes. Thank you. Renewal, item nine F, renewal resolution to support and endorse the continued operations of the LC Regional Police Academy, Dr. Tijerina.
Marisa. I make a motion that we approve nine F, and if we get a second, I will read the resolution.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Ms. Leando. I have a second by Ms. Bella. Resolution, Ms. Leando.
Whereas the vision statement of Laredo College affirms its commitment to cultivating a dynamic learning, teaching and working environment that empowers students to succeed, foster institutional excellence, and inspire graduates to drive positive changes and make meaningful contributions to their communities and the world. And whereas the Board of Trustees of the Laredo College District recognizes that the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement serves as the state's regulatory authority responsible for establishing, implementing, and upholding professional standards for police officers, county corrections officers, and emergency communications personnel. And whereas the Board of Trustees of the Laredo College District recognizes that under Texas law, no individual may be appointed to serve as a peace officer, county corrections officer, or any other law enforcement position without holding a current and valid license issued by the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement. And whereas the Board of Trustees of the Laredo College District recognizes that the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement maintains strong and effective partnerships with educational institutions, governmental agencies, and public entities across Texas and the nation to advance its mission and uphold professional standards in law enforcement. And whereas the Board of Trustees of the Laredo College District has entered into a cooperative agreement with the South Texas Council of Governments, which receives state grant funding to operate a licensed law enforcement training academy hereinafter referred to as the Laredo College District Regional Police Academy, providing accredited instruction for police officers within the four counties, South Texas region. And whereas the Laredo College District Regional Police Academy is currently reapplying for its training license as required by the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement to continue operating as an authorized regional training center for law enforcement personnel. And whereas on December fifteenth, twenty zero five, the Board of Trustees of Laredo College District, now known as Laredo College District, adopted a resolution supporting and endorsing the continued operation of the Laredo Community College District Regional Police Academy. Whereas the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement requires the Board of Trustees of the Laredo College District to adopt a new formal resolution of support as part of the application process to renew the training license for the Regional Police Academy. And whereas the Board of Trustees of the Laredo College District has consistently supported the operation of the Laredo College District Regional Police Academy for more than fifty years. And now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Laredo College District hereby expresses its full support and endorsement of the continued operation of the Laredo College District Regional Police Academy and affirms its commitment to maintaining the academy's role as a vital provider of accredited law enforcement training in the South Texas region. The foregoing resolution was duly offered by, there was a motion by Cindy Leando and a second.
By Ms. Bella.
By Ms. Tita Bella, and after discussion, if approved, was approved by the Board of Trustees of the Laredo College District at a meeting duly called and held in Laredo, Texas on November nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, at which one, two.
Nine, eight members. No.
At the time right now, it's six. Six members were present by the following vote.
There was, okay, so there's a motion by Ms. Leando. There's a second by Ms. Bella. Anybody, four?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody against? No. Motion passes. Thank you. Dr. Ramirez?
Yes, sir. I'd like to recognize our Police Academy Director, which is Chief Donald Hill, who has, over the course of many years, supported not only our Police Academy, but certainly the law enforcement program on our campus. And when necessary, has stepped up to the plate on many occasions to help support our homeland security programs and all of our law enforcement programming that we do on campus. And so I want to acknowledge him. The recognitions that we get from T. Cole are because of his leadership, his team, his faculty. And honestly, the percentage of our student populations who graduate from our academy are second to none. And so the recognitions that we get is because of his leadership, because of the guidance he gets from Dr. Tijerina and Dr. Hernandez. But certainly, he's at the forefront of making sure that we're in compliance all the time. So thank you, sir, very much for your service to Laredo College, our students and our community.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Any comments? Thank you so much, sir, for your hard work. We really do appreciate you on behalf of the board. Thank you. Appreciate your support. Thank you. So we're moving on to nine G, approval of general education core curriculum. Dr. Maricela Rodriguez Tijerina.
I'd like to make a motion to approve nine G, nine H, and nine I, if there's a second, and I would read the
I'll second.
Designation.
Okay, there's a motion to approve nine G, nine H, and nine I. There's a motion by Ms. Leando. Do I have a second?
Aye.
Ms. Bella, okay. Ms. Leando, can you please read resolution for nine I?
Designation of public forum areas for expressive activities Texas Education Code fifty-one point ninety-three fifteen slash Senate Bill twenty-nine seventy-two compliance. Whereas the eighty-ninth Texas Legislature enacted Senate Bill twenty-nine seventy-two, amending Texas Education Code fifty-one point ninety-three fifteen to require the governing board of each public institution of higher education to designate one or more campus locations as public forums for expressive activities by students, employees, and members of the public. And whereas Senate Bill twenty-nine seventy-two further requires that such designations be approved by formal board action through resolution and that the approved areas be identified in institutional administrative procedures and published on the college's website. And whereas the Board of Trustees of Laredo College has approved revisions to local policies, DGC Local, FLA Local, and GD Local, to align institutional procedures with these statutory requirements and ensure viewpoint-neutral regulation of expressive activities. And whereas Laredo College has identified and mapped specific public forum areas on the Fort MacIntosh campus and South campus that meet the criteria established by law for expressive activities. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of Laredo College hereby formally designates the campus public forum areas for expressive activities as shown on the attached maps labeled Laredo College Public Forum Areas, Fort MacIntosh Campus and Laredo College Public Forum Areas, South Campus. Be it further resolved that the president or designee is authorized to publish the approved maps on the Laredo College website, incorporate these maps and related administrative procedures into institutional documentation, and take all necessary steps to ensure continued compliance with Texas Education Code fifty-one point ninety-three fifteen and Senate Bill twenty-nine seventy-two, adopted this nineteenth day of November, twenty twenty-five, by the Board of Trustees of Laredo College. And the maps are by your computers.
So there is a motion by Ms. Leando, and there is a second by Ms. Bella to approve nine G, nine H, nine I. Resolution has been read. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against? No. Motion passes. Let's give a round of applause to Ms. Leando for all the reading. Thank you, Ms. Leando. We really do appreciate it. We're moving on to item ten, President Remarks and Report, ten A, ten B, Campus Police, Campus Police Personal and Travel Report, and President Remarks, Dr. Ramirez.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you, trustees, for tonight's meeting. Just a couple of announcements. Now, as part of our agenda, I do have to state clearly what I'm going to comment about, but and I'll take them in order. We had a meeting with the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board on building a talent-strong Texas and working with the coordinating board to meet the demands that the governor has set forth for us. And building a talent-strong Texas is an initiative that is aimed at enhancing educational attainment and workforce development for all working-age Texans. The initiative focuses on expanding opportunities, aligning skills with workforce demands, our strategic goals for twenty twenty-two to twenty thirty, and developing a strategic plan that aligns with the one that we have for our institution and workforce development. And I'm happy to report that as part of that meeting, most of us are already meeting the demands of building a talent-strong Texas. We were asked to continue to engage and to report clearly the initiatives that we're following and that we are enhancing and how our programs are growing and developing. There are some initiatives that, that will be having to meet the needs and demands of, which they're going to change our reporting systems probably in the near future. And what we report and how we report it, they haven't yet been able to catch up to House Bill eight with building a talent-strong Texas with our reporting. But know that there is a committee that's working on this, and I'm happy to serve. Secondly, the Texas Association of Community Colleges, we had our quarterly meeting. We talked about the legislative agenda that was passed over this last session. Some of the initiatives that we've all had to take on to clearly change the way we do business in many aspects. One being our agendas postings being so far in advance now. Before it was seventy-two hours, now it's five working days before we have our first meeting. And so making sure that we get that information out to the public is clearly important to everyone. The mere fact that we, even for public testimony, we are allowed to give people, they cannot sign up at a quarter, a quarter of the start of the meeting. So there are some strict guidelines that we're adhering to, and certainly we want to do our part. As part of my TAC participation, I am on the TAC Marketing Committee and on the TAC Legislative Committee. We met today for the Legislative Committee and day before yesterday on the Marketing Committee. And we are working for the interim on several initiatives. One being, how do we make sure that the state at large understands the work that community colleges are doing? And that the perception that college, that the trust in colleges has diminished. I think it's clear by the enrollment that you've seen or Um, I think it's clear by the enrollment that you've seen, our, our enrollment growth, that, that the community at large does trust our community college and the work that we're doing. Uh, that our initiatives are supporting, uh, our students, whether they're fifteen years old or they're seventy-two years old. I think our oldest student right now is about seventy-two years old. And so all of our initiatives are to support all of our students, uh, regardless of, of, of need and age. Yes. Uh, and so, um, uh, we all, I also had a meeting last week uh, with the Commissioner of, Commissioner Moser, uh, with, of the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board. He met with all of the residents of South Texas universities and colleges. It was very clear, he's, he met with us for about an hour and fifteen minutes and was very clear about building a talent strong Texas was not an option. And, um, us adhering to all of the, the rules and laws set forth in this, in this last legislative session and all the others previous to that, we're all going to be audited and clearly evaluated for compliance. And so, uh, I think we're off to a great start. I think we're, we're meeting all of the needs and demands and, um, and, and we're, it was not anything we didn't expect to hear, but certainly it was, it was something really, um, it was, he sent us an email from two days, gave us two days notice and said, you will meet with me in San Antonio on Wednesday. So I was there, uh, and so we, we had a really good meeting with him. Uh, and lastly, our, uh, twenty twenty-five, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-five, twenty-six multi-hazard emergency operations plan or our EOP review. Uh, we did, we are now in compliance. Uh, we had, we submitted our report, uh, on time. And on the seventh of November, I received a letter uh, from the Texas State University Texas, Texas School Safety Center that said, dear Dr. Ramirez, congratulations, Laredo College has satisfied all evaluation criteria for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six multi-hazard emergency operations plan review cycle. A copy of the Laredo College detailed final report is attached. The Texas School Safety Center appreciates your efforts and looks forward, forward to our continued partnership to ensure the safety and security of Laredo College. If you have any questions or need assistance, please contact our office, our regional office, School Safety Readiness Specialist, Heather Hernandez. Sincerely, the Texas School Safety Center, Texas State University. This, um, Texas State University has been designated by the Governor of Texas as the Texas School Safety Center of the entire state of Texas. We are participating in that program. Uh, we submitted the EOP, thanks to Dr. David and, and Chief Hernandez, Cassandra, um, it was, uh, Dr. Martinez, uh, Ms. Cardenas, there was Andrea Lopez. There was a, a group of people that worked on our EOP, submitted it, uh, and, and I just wanted to recognize them because I think this was really, really huge. And again, another auditable requirement that we needed to comply with and we did. And with that, thank you again for, um, for all your support. Uh, I do want to wish all of our employees, uh, and our students and, and all of you a very happy Thanksgiving. We have a lot to be grateful for. We've made some incredible, um, dreams come true and we certainly have been able to, uh, attain and reach so many of our goals, uh, because of the support that you all give us and certainly because of the hard work of all of our faculty and staff and the dedication of our students. Uh, we couldn't do it without the support of our donors uh, and people who really believe in what we do. And so, uh, this is truly a community effort and, and we're, we're, we have a lot to be grateful for. So thank you all very much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Ramirez. Uh, we're moving on to eleven upcoming events, November twenty-four to the twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five Laredo College Thanksgiving holidays. Tuesday, December second, six thirty PM, Laredo College Tree Lighting at Fort McIntosh Campus. Friday, December fifth, twenty twenty-five, seven PM, Laredo, Laredo College Employee Winter Dance at eighteen forty-eight Event Center. Friday, December twelfth, twenty twenty-five, Laredo College Graduation. December eighteenth, twenty twenty-five through January second, twenty twenty-six, Laredo College Winter Break. Uh, Monday, January fifth, twenty twenty-six, eight, eight AM, Laredo College in Service at, at LC Fort Mac. Uh, and then we have, uh, twelve, uh, twelve, next, next meeting date, Thursday, February fifth, twenty twenty-six, six PM, regular board meeting for Laredo College Board Trustees. Before we adjourn, uh, I want to thank my colleagues, uh, for, for, for attending, uh, today's meeting. I also echoing a couple of, of, of things that Dr. Ramirez said. Uh, we also want to wish, uh, on behalf of the board, all of you a happy Thanksgiving and, you know, hopefully you all spend it, oh, and Merry Christmas as well. Yeah, uh, uh, happy Thanksgiving and Merry Christmas to you and all your families. Uh, and like Dr. Ramirez said, we have a, we have a lot to be grateful and thankful for. Uh, so, um, on behalf of us, please, uh, enjoy your, your, your holidays, have fun. Don't have too much fun, but no, have fun. And if you travel, please be safe, uh, como quiera. Now, uh, just before we leave, board members, uh, on behalf of myself and Dr. Ramirez, we will be having a little invitation for board members, uh, to be able to attend a little, a little, uh, gathering for, for, for the holidays. Hopefully, uh, you all can attend. Uh, Ms. Bo Canera is asking if you could please RSVP because we will be, uh, ordering food. So if you all could do that, uh, go ahead and just get with Ms. Bo Canera on that. So, uh, if with that being said, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So.
There's a motion by, by Ms. Bella, there's a second by Judge Martinez. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against? No, thank you. Motion passes and it is approximately eight fifty-one. Thank you all for being here. Have a great evening.